So many unique items and businesses here in town. Would would just recommend that you spend some time there this coming Saturday. Secondly, I want to just to talk about something that I've noticed, and perhaps you have too. There is a an organization called Laundry Love of Linsburg. Have you seen that? It's a a just a super organization. I know that Erica Lysell is heavily involved, and I think many others. But they open up the laundry laundromat for people who are just need an extra help in needing soap and provide quarters for people. So it's pretty amazing project. It's just for neighbors and that can just use a little helping hand. And I'm just been very impressed with that. They then they began operating back in February, March, but they are they're at regular times when they announce and ask the public to to come forward as needed. And then lastly, our assistant administrator, Lucas Nice, today testified at the Special Workforce Development Committee in Topeka, and I watched that online, and he did a super job. And he spoke very well, made Linsburg look very good with our our new Linsburg Child Development Center. He spoke about that, got a couple of quick questions, and just did a super job. So we thank Lucas for for doing that. With that, we will move to item number six, which is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda includes three items, and these items are routine enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless it counts a member's request. It will include item A, Approval Minutes from November 7, 2022, leading. Item B, Payroll Ordinance 5395, and Item C, Purchase Order Ordinance 5396. Is there a motion?
Submove.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we will ask our city clerk to please take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Presley?
Yes.
Hebel?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Peterson?
Epstein.
Vanderweig?
Yes.
Gallant?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Roxy. The motion passes. We will now move to item number seven, Appointments, and I will call on our Chief of Police, Michael Davis. Welcome, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I come to you tonight asking to for you to accept a new member to our volunteer fire department. His name is Thomas Massa. He lives here in Linsburg. He works for the McPherson County Sheriff's Department. He has a desire to help serve his community, and being that he wants to give back to his community, he's asked to do it in the form of working for the fire department. So I'm asking that we admit him to our fire department.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for the chief? Thank you very much. Chief, we appreciate you bringing this name to us, and we will appoint Thomas Massa to the volunteer fire service for the city of Linsburg. Do I have a motion for confirmation?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Questions? Seeing no questions, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose no. The ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Massa, and thank you, chief, for this great addition to our fire department. We'll move to item number eight, and we will call on Jordan Erkovich for a report. I'm Antonio.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council. So the Planning Commission will meet tomorrow, November 22, at 6:00 p.m. It's a joint meeting between the Planning Commission and the Design Review Board. It's going to be the first meeting where they discuss the appearance guidelines that are in City Code. This is kicking off a six-month process to review and rewrite the appearance guidelines, which are used by the Designer Board to review signage and also exterior modifications for downtown buildings. Letters were sent to all downtown property owners, residents, residents, and also business owners and operators to inform them of the meeting schedule and also of the meeting tomorrow, as well as it included a link to an online survey for anyone to take. So if anybody is hearing this who hasn't gotten that or hasn't read that, please feel free to attend. This process is designed to be inclusive and really does rely on your input, and of course, all members of the public can attend and are encouraged to do so. That's it.
Thank you, Jordan. Other questions?
Time and location?
Yeah, so 6:00 p.m., City Hall. This room.
Further questions? Seeing no further questions, thank you, Jordan. Now, move to item number nine, Old Businesses Are Old Business to Consider?
There is not.
Thank you. Item number 10, New Business. And we will begin with item A, which is the Rural Fire District Agreement. And I'll call on David Hay, our finance manager. Welcome, David.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. So before it is an agreement between the city of Linsburg and the Rural Fire District Number Eight. It's reviewed and updated annually. This agreement states that the city provides services and vehicle storage for the Rural Fire District, as well as a payment to volunteer fires fighters for rural runs. In return, the Rural Fire District pays a fee to the city for these services plus a set amount for the firearms. Proposed in the 2023 agreement is a 3% increase in the fee for the city provided services and vehicle storage. It has already been approved by the Rural Fire District, and so my recommendation is a motion to approve the 2023 agreement between the city of Linsburg and Rural Fire District Number Eight.
Questions? Excuse me, for David.
I have a question, but not of this exact thing, so I probably will hold off. But can I just ask a question? We're done with this discussion of the rural.
Sure.
Or maybe I may I'll just ask it.
Is it? Yep, okay.
It's it's about the agreement. It's part of our package, so I guess it's appropriate. But it talks about the liability that we have with our agreement to with the rural with the Rural Fire District. Talks about liability, about our liability for showing up or not failing to show up. But it doesn't say anything about our liability for actually carrying out the service. Has that been discussed or covered anywhere? We can say this for another time, but reading through that agreement, that kind of jumped out at me as far as it's the city that's making equipment and is it our volunteers making the call on if if it if we go on a call and something happens, our liability for that?
David, chief out.
Go for it.
Sorry. I'm sorry.
So when we respond on a county fire, a rural fire, we're using their equipment. So it is our personnel, but they're also the county's personnel, and they're using county equipment unless they ask for a mutual aid where they need additional equipment. Then we would roll out city equipment. But so the county or rural fire just has their own equipment as the city keeps our own fire equipment. That that's what answers your question.
Well, when I got the liabilities part of the agreement, I was expecting some, not old harmless type thing, but some conversation about our liability to city on a county fire.
I think all.
And I didn't see it. It just it went a different direction than I was expecting to see in that paragraph.
Well, I think what's unique about this is what we're doing is we're housing their equipment, but we share fire employees. So the same people who work and volunteer for our fire department also volunteer for the rural side. So when they go out on fire in their area, they're working on behalf of the county and the county fire and their equipment.
Okay, so it's not like the Linsburg Volunteer Fire Department's making that run. It's the rural.
And even if you look at their trucks, the trucks even say Rural Fire District Eight. It doesn't say Linsburg Fire. Now, we do have an agreement between the two that if either needs more resources, we can use either equipment, which means we have a big fire here in the state, we can use the rural fire trucks and vice versa. And at that point, that might be where you're going, but I I would defer to our city attorney who's not here to discuss what kind of liability that would be, but I would assume.
For another day that might.
For another day.
Question.
But generally, when they go out and just that, it's under their their control, their rules, their their liability.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, chief. Good questions. Any further questions for David?
This 3% increase was anticipated when we get our budget. Theoretically, it's already been approved.
Correct.
Okay.
3% has historically been the increase year over year for that portion of it. We did last year have some increases because of the fire runs, but that was a different. So they pay us for the housing, and then they also pay us for the runs, and the runs was totally different. But it remained the same based off our pay is the same.
Further questions? Seeing no further questions, thank you, David. Council, do we have a a motion to approve the 2023 agreement between the city of Linsburg and Rural Fire District Number Eight? Submove.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion on the motion. Seeing no discussion, do we need a roll call on this? Okay, I'll have our city clerk do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Hebel?
Yes.
Presley?
Yes.
Corwin?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Vanderweig?
Yes.
Gallant?
Yes.
Thank you, Roxy. Thank you, council. The motion passes. We will now move to item B and call on our chief, Michael Davis.
You're getting a lot of me in that, aren't you? So in April 2019, the Linsburg EMS, which was a volunteer service at the time, applied for and was grant funds through a grant with the state through the Kansas Bureau of EMS. It's called the KRAP grant or revolving assistance fund grant program. And that fund or that grant was to cover half the cost of a EKG depressurilator machine. That's what they carry into them, the hookup kit, EKGs, and they can send it straight to the hospital, that kind of stuff. Well, per the grant rules, if an EMS service surrenders their service permit within four years of the award of the equipment and or materials, the ownership of the same reverts back to the board of EMS. As you recall, in August of 2021, we switched over to a contracted service and away from our volunteer service. When we did that, it triggered the rules in the grant for Kansas Board of EMS to request the equipment back, but it took them a little over a year and a half to do so. And in doing so, they reached out to AMR, requested the equipment back, and then I was notified. I reached out to the grants administrator to see if we could work out some kind of deal to purchase the equipment because we've been using it. It matches the other piece of equipment we have in the other ambulance. It's also used, and per the rules, we were able to, we should have been able to pay the depreciated rate. Unfortunately, I was told by the grants administrator that we no longer qualified as an entity because we surrendered our permit, which was part of the requirement when we took on AMR, but also to avoid the three open cases that were against us through the Kansas Board of EMS. I then asked if AMR could then purchase the equipment since they were working on our behalf and using the equipment, and I was told that they no longer, they did not qualify either because they were not a nonprofit group. They were a for-profit. So with nowhere else to go, we reached out to, oh, I forget, our Federico and associates to try and reach out to the Kansas Board of EMS to discuss the issue with them and see if we can get some resolution with them. They did agree to give us more time so we wouldn't lose an ambulance for a while, but we were not going to get an extended period of time, so we still were under the guise of having to replace this equipment. And so what I did is contacted Zoll originally, the maker of the same one that we have in the other vehicle. And the reason we're doing that is because you do not want two separate pieces of equipment that's more time, more training, mistakes can happen because we're using a different piece of equipment, and so we wanted to keep it the same. And in doing so, they came back with a quote in the amount of $26,376 for the monitor. I then contacted GMR, which is the parent company of AMR, and they agreed to give us their purchasing power to help bring down the cost of the depressurilator, and we were able to get a quote through them for $23,487.75. Obviously, it was a little frustrating to be dealing with them. When I contacted them, I did not get a lot of cooperation from them, and I just kept being told that we just need to move past this. And I'm like, well, moving past it means taking an ambulance out of service. I do want to give credit to Zolls because they made it clear that if we did lose a monitor and had to take an ambulance out of service, they would have donated one temporarily until we could get one. So there are a lot of people who did step up to play and help us. AMR came in very quickly and offered to get us their pricing on a monitor, and we were able to come up with these quotes. So I'm asking a motion to approve the purchase of the Zoll X Series manual monitor and depressurilator from GMR in the amount of $23,487.75.
Are there questions for chief?
So this is a brand-new monitor now, so we are.
Correct. And we do get, yes, and we do get funding back from AMR for using our equipment as well.
Which ambulance does it go in?
It would be in 201, I believe. It didn't specify which one. It just said we had to give one back. I'd have to look at the serial number to be exact, but I think it's 201.
Yeah, because it would be nice to keep it in 201 if it's.
Well, we can move them. They're 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 carryable, so we can move them.
Oh, okay. Perfect. Councilmember Peterson?
Just refresh, the agreement that we signed with AMR, they provide the service, but we provide all the equipment, but then lease, then we essentially charge them for the use of the equipment.
Correct.
How they, okay.
Correct. They lease it, and all told together, we get about $41,000 back per year.
Further questions? Seeing no further questions, thank you, chief. Council, motion is in order to approve the purchase of the Zoll X Series manual from GMR in the amount of $23,487.75. Is there a motion? Submove.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion on the motion. Seeing no discussion, I'll have our city clerk call a roll call vote, please.
Councilmembers Vanderweig?
Yes.
Gallant?
Yes.
Corwin?
Yes.
Presley?
Yes.
Hebel?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, council. Thank you, Roxy. We'll now move to item C, which is the Employee Health Insurance Renewal, and call on our city administrator, Christine Ockert.
Thank you, Mayor. You may have noticed that this item in your packet is a little vague. We we renew our plan year for our employee health benefits on December 1st, and so we follow the same schedule as previous years, and we put the the contract out to bid, and we were presented with five options that were outlined in your packet. We had the renewal option through Blue Cross Blue Shield at a 16.8% increase over last year. We had a level funded option that was presented to us through Blue Cross at a decrease from last year. United Healthcare at a significant increase, Aetna at a decrease but with less coverage, and KEMIT at a 16% increase over last year. Until today, we weren't sure which option we were going to present to you because we were waiting on a census to be completed by Blue Cross and Freedom Claims for, who is our third-party administrator for our plan. So we did open enrollment on November 2nd, and we got all of the data that we needed for who was going to be on our employee benefit policy. They took all of that data, and they ran the census to determine our risk profile, and that was the the number that we needed back to determine which of the options that we were going to be able to go with. So your memo says we would just like blanket approval for an umbrella health insurance coverage. However, we did hear back today that based on our risk profile, we are presented with the number two option, which is level funded through Blue Cross Blue Shield. However, that 12.28% decrease has changed a little bit because of the number of employees that enrolled in the coverage because it is excellent coverage, and those who switched from single to family coverage because of changes in their family or changes in the benefits. Our risk profile went up just a little bit because we had more people and some changes in our policy. So the numbers are a little bit different, but we budgeted $493,574 for the cost to insure our employees over the 23 plan year. The estimated cost came back at $422,940, so we are about $70,000 under what we budgeted, and the total increase is 0.47%. So we are almost exactly where we were last year. So there are no changes to our employees. They will have the same premiums, the same deductibles, and we expect that we will be able to put about $187,000 into the reserve. We're currently 179% funded for our employee health insurance, so we'll be able to build up that reserve to an even greater amount. So it was all good news. So I apologize for being a little bit vague and asking for you to approve us without knowing exactly which option we were going to present to you. But thankfully, that came in today for very good news, and we are pleased to present to you that option. So this evening, we are looking for a motion to improve umbrella health insurance and middle coverage with Blue Cross Blue Shield, with Freedom Claims serving as our third-party administrator, as presented.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table. Is there discussion? Councilmember Peterson?
You mentioned the amount of funding or that's funded at 100, it was 179%. What what's considered fully funded there? Are we exceeding the industry norm, or are we?
We are exceeding it. David, remind me, but I believe that the goal was to be 115?
Yes.
115% funded, so we're currently 179, and we expect to grow that over the course of the next year.
Is is just curiosity, if I'm not familiar with Freedom Claims, is that a part of Blue Cross Blue Shield? Or do you know?
Roxy, would you like to take a stab at explaining? No, they're they are their own private company out of Great Bend, and they manage our self-insured portion of our health insurance.
Okay, okay. I just, the reason, the only reason I, Blue Cross Blue Shield operates as a third-party administrator for a lot of people. I just think it's kind of funny.
They they also are the administrator for our, it's like secondary insurance.
Right, yes. Self-insured portion.
So somewhere we've gotten, okay.
And we have an established relationship with them, and so we have the same folks that have been helping us here every year and who do all of the claims processing for us, and it's been a good relationship.
Okay, well, great. And I and again, I just, generally, a lot of times, you see this company, and then Blue Cross works as the third-party administrator, and that's, so anyway, okay, great. Further questions? Okay, seeing no further questions. You have the motion before you to approve umbrella health insurance and middle coverage with the provider, Blue Cross Blue Shield, with Freedom Claims serving as third-party administrator, as presented. Roxy, if you would please call a roll call vote.
Councilmembers Peterson?
Yes.
Vanderweig?
Yes.
Gallant?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bruce?
Could you forget my name?
Hebel?
Yes.
Presley?
Yes.
Corwin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, council, and thank you, Roxy, and thank you to our city administrator and all those of you who were involved in putting that difficult package together. We will now move to item D, Cow Creek Engineering Project Update, and we will call on Jordan, our director.
All right, good evening again. So I'll kind of put this all together. So the first thing I'll do is the update, and then I'll talk about the design supplement. And then also Tyler Glissman from Wilson &amp; Co. is here to help me answer questions if you have any, so we can both, of course, answer questions. So, okay, the Community Development Department has been working with affected property owners to secure access easements to facilitate ongoing maintenance of Cow Creek since August of 2021. After 15 months of outreach, which has included emails, phone calls, letters, in-person meetings, onsite meetings, and also a public hearing and question-and-answer forum back in March, the department has secured 50 of the 55 easements required, so that's 91% of the required easements, to facilitate this maintenance project. The department is now working with Wilson &amp; Co. to draft and publish a request or proposal to complete this work. So just talking about, this is the design supplement portion. So given the time and care taken to answer inquiries and to accommodate property owners' requests, Wilson &amp; Co. has submitted a design supplement request in the amount of $19,500. This request covers the additional work of Wilson &amp; Co. consultants and engineers over the past year to modify and add easements, answer numerous questions and inquiries from the public, make multiple site visits, and also attend and participate in the public hearing and question-and-answer forum held in March of 2022. So to wrap this up, the Cow Creek Maintenance Project is essential for protecting the health, welfare, and safety of Linsburg residents and the community at large. This project, along with the ongoing maintenance funded through the stormwater utility fees, will assure proper flowing capacity along Cow Creek while also protecting the life and property of those who could be affected by severe flooding events. So today, there's a recommendation from the department for a motion to approve the supplemental request from Wilson &amp; Co. in the amount of $19,500.
Questions for Jordan?
I have a little bit of a question. I know we've had hard times securing some of the asks of these people. I know I was actually approached by one of them. I know some of these things that people wanted, you agree, you were able to agree to verbally, but you would not give them the agreement in writing. And a person or two out of those, I recommended getting it in writing because I've had a couple other people have not gone stuff in writing that the city, well, you've agreed to do, and then whenever it came time to do stuff, it didn't get done, and they got bit by it. So how do you plan to get these people to agree to do that without giving them something in writing?
Sure. So Councilmember Gallant, could you be more specific as to who? Be happy to talk to you in private if you would prefer. Okay, so I'll just answer that directly. Anybody who has requested a specific accommodation, I have provided that accommodation in writing to them already. So whether that be for protecting trees, whether that be for protecting, whether that be for, you know, protecting a wall that's maybe on their property, or maybe a walking bridge that's been one.
Removing stuff.
Removing anything. So I've been very, very clear for the last approaching 16 months now that the city is very willing to accommodate any of the property owners' requests as long as they're reasonable and within the scope of the project, and all of that has been provided in writing and has been discussed and offered multiple times in person, over email, and over the phone. So to whomever is suggesting that the city has not offered that in writing, I would politely suggest that they are incorrect and that the city has offered that numerous times.
Other questions?
I guess I'm just, just germane to the question. I know we need to prove this additional almost $20,000 that we're being assessed because of the delays, but can we talk about the the future of where we're going with the each one?
Absolutely.
Is that okay to ask now, or do we?
Yes, I think, I mean, this this topic needs to be addressed, so absolutely.
I guess moving forward, what, I guess, do we see an endgame here? Since there are just a couple of property owners that are keeping this from happening, how do we find resolution, I guess, in place?
Yeah, and and that's an excellent question, and I want to, I want, this is probably a good place to to say that Jordan has has worked very hard diligently on this, and I know that Councilmember Peterson has now been talking, and there's, there's, it's some good questions. It's like, what, can you just address what happens? Where do we go if we, we have five left? If we get, we work. If we get, or three of them?
Sure, so actually Tyler, maybe this would be a good point for you to come and talk to, and I can also.
Come on up, and why don't you announce your name again, and?
Tyler Glissman, Wilson &amp; Company. I've been around the community for a long time, done a lot of different things here. Thank you, mayor and council. Where can you go with this? Let me put a little history on this. It's been, what, sixteen years since we started this process? And this is the farthest we've gone, which is tremendous, and that's from Jordan's effort and from, from everybody's effort in the past. Tim Dunn started this in two thousand and five, and Chris has picked up the helm too. So really, the key is, is, is you can exercise eminent domain if needed, or depending on where the landowner is, maybe go without it. Now, the key with that is that landowner will have to be strategically, either at the beginning or in an area where there isn't a change. There are portions of the channel that actually are at grade, which is very few. There's only like one area that I can think off the top of my head. So the real key is, is it depends where that individual is on whether you can go forth without it. But what you can always do is exercise eminent domain, which is never fun, but it is a tool that you have in your toolbox. I don't know if that really answered the question fully, did that?
Partially for me, but I don't know if it's totally, but yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's the worst-case scenario. The, to me, the best-case scenario is to keep working on the easements. I mean, you've got ninety-one percent of them. The, the real key is, 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 Linsburg's always been a community that's always looked beyond themselves, and I love this community because the community's always done what's right and not looked at themselves, and that's what's made this community so successful. And really, that's the key is, is for these individuals to remember they're part of the community and part of the legacy that you're all creating, that I've seen you create over the years. So really, the key is, is, is there's only a handful of individuals that are really holding up maintenance that really needs to be done. I was just chatting with Chris, and I don't remember the difference in the profiles, but the channel keeps silting in over the years. And it's been sixteen years since we surveyed it the last time, and my gut was, is in places it was a foot deeper, and so, you know, obviously, it depends where you're at in the channel. So that will just continue to happen to where eventually the drainage structures are just going to be plugged. So eventually, it's going to become critical to where you'll have to, you'll have to go in that domain if an agreement can't be reached.
So as it is today, I assume there's a greater risk for flooding of private property, whether a house or garage or whatever than it was ten years ago or fifteen years ago? And what you're saying is that another five years from now, that risk will be exponentially.
Yeah, exponentially, it'll be greater to next year than it is today.
Yeah, as, as it sults in. I mean, that's, the interesting piece is, is we've all seen yards grow, right? You know, how many times you go look at the old sidewalks and that grass is two, three, four inches taller than that? Well, it didn't start out that way. So the, the channel bottom just keeps coming up with all the foliage, everything that's, that occurs to dust, everything. So eventually, it'll become more of an issue where you really have to do something. Right now, there's an opportunity to clean it out. The point of the easements and everything is, is to make it to where Chris can get out there and take care of this as needed instead of waiting for twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years. So it's really trying to get it to a long-term maintenance, sustainable situation. And then hopefully, as the city keeps working with the county, with, with McPherson County and Zaline County, to try and get the drainage structures further downstream repaired, then the channel can be improved further down and, and maintain it. But that's a longer process that's going to take more time, and this is the start point that really needs to be done to maintain the city's infrastructure inside of the city.
I was going to say, out of the five people, or five holdouts, whatever, how many of those are actually people that we have contact with that are just refusing to for some reason or another? How many of them are people that just we can't get a hold of?
To my knowledge, everybody has been contacted to this point.
Well, no, I mean, like, that you could talk to, like, if you wanted to call them up tomorrow or just DM them here in town, you could, versus the ones that we just have no way to contact them?
Yeah, so three of them are very easy to contact, two of them are harder to contact, but all of them have been contacted in person, to my knowledge, just to today.
So we can have three people that just aren't really willing to give us an easement, and they're aware that we need it to.
So have they given reasons for, for not giving the signed easement, or are they just non-responsive?
I would say that two have been non-responsive for the most part. We haven't been able to make contact with those two, and I think those two will come on for it. So I'm, I'm, I have positive hopes for those two. One of them, I've contacted and probably spent over ten hours with in person discussing any and every concern. That individual doesn't really have any specific concerns, but has just yet to return the easement. So that one I'm also pretty confident about and hopeful for. There are two other easements that do have concerns, some of which I think are perfectly reasonable and that have been accommodated. So for example, protecting a retaining wall and also trees on the property, that's been written explicitly in their easements. That accommodation's been made specifically for, for them to allow for those things, and I think those are reasonable. There's sentimental attachment, there's reasons to protect a hundred-year-old trees, all those things. The concerns that were most recently expressed to me were about the width of the channel grading, and the concern was, was that it was too wide. And my understanding of, of why they feel this way is just because that's, they feel that it's unnecessary for it to be that wide. So it's not necessarily based in any kind of like engineering standard or what we need for, you know, flood prevention events. It's, I just feel that the grading is too wide. To me, I just feel doesn't justify an accommodation when we're talking about engineering. That's my sense.
So, yeah, so the width of that channel bottom is established for maintenance purposes so that a skid loader could be run down there. So we're trying to make it simple to maintain and consistently maintain. The intent is not for the city to be out in the easement. It's only when it gets to the point where it's starting to cause problems with the structures and then to be cleaned out. My hopes is, is that, you know, thirty years from now, you have cleaned out, not every five years or, you know, but it all depends on how fast that sediment builds up in the channel is what's going to dictate the maintenance. Most likely, it's going to be, the heaviest maintenance will be on your furthest downstream. Your lightest maintenance will be on the upper stream, unless there's, you know, new homes built and there's a sediment load that gets put in there inadvertently, then that'll maybe clean.
Okay, so I may have lost count, but is there one more situation? Or was that all?
No, that's it. So there are three that I, that I hope hold out, two that, that have been challenging.
And the one that's challenging that wasn't the width, what was there? That was just?
There, I think that it's both about the same in this one.
So, I mean, because the way the situation is, would it be where we could have you disclose, like email council, what properties we're still working on, or is this something where it would have to be like an executive session thing to discuss?
Like right in this moment?
No, just tomorrow or something, you know, just so we kind of know who's, the, what people are still left, what needs to still be done.
Sure, so I, I, I do think that that information has at least been disclosed to the mayor and to Councilmember Peterson.
Okay.
And I'll defer to Christie for, for that contact, if she'd like to report it.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to be, this is a delicate situation, trying to, to accommodate people. We just are getting to the point to where we, Jordan has spent a lot of time, and we're just not getting where we need to be on a few of them. Can we start the project before they're all signed, or is that just not something? Let's say we have one block where there's?
It, it would really depend on what the physical geometrics are of that block. If it would happen to be the block that the channel is at grade, then you could take the risk, would be my recommendation. If it's, if it's a block where there's a heavy sediment load and we need to take, you know, just remember there's some areas that, you know, you're going to take a couple of feet out. If it's one of those areas, you could do what's downstream, but you really couldn't do what's upstream because you wouldn't serve a purpose. It really depends on where the property's at in the situation. So if it's, if it's the first property of the channel, you could go forth because you're taking care of everything downstream.
And, okay, thank you. And not, just for a little clarification, the twenty-foot is so that is part of an easement, just in using the easement, using the area to get in and do what you need to do? Or is it a full twenty-feet?
The, the channel bottom is, is, I want to say, is it six feet? That's what we were trying to set it as. So your bucket widths are generally five-foot bucket widths, so I'm hoping you can get bigger equipment. But we plan on like five-foot bucket widths. So the channel bottom's roughly six foot wide, and then the rest of that is, is, is so when you do have the two-foot load, we want to slope that such that you can mow it. So that width is set for back slope that's gentle and, and is a yard like back slope, not, not like, you know, where you have two-to-ones for channels. We, you know, it's a yard, we want to keep it usable, movable. We just need to get it down to where it flows. So that width is really for the back slope and then for equipment to be able to get in and out.
So the channel itself, it will literally be grass, so I assume each homeowner will be asked to keep mowed. We want them to keep it mowed for obvious reasons, but it's not, it's not like there's going to be a ditch with gravel and?
No.
It's, it's going to be a slope.
Yeah, so it'd be, I'll probably regret saying it this way, so the Garfield drainage that we did?
Where the new bridge?
Yeah, yeah, that would involve this?
Paper.
Yeah, so where we, where we, where we did the permanent easement for the drainage easement through the field, and that's grass, that's, that's really what we're after is a grass-lined swale. And the eas, the permanent easement is just so when that sediment builds back up in thirty, who knows how long, but when it builds back up, we don't have to go back through this process, that the city can notify the people that they're going to do a cleaning. It doesn't have to be the whole area, it would be strategic areas that would need it at the time. But the intent is, is it's going to be a grass-lined swale. That would be, and I, I think we even tried to do a, a grass seed that's, that's kind of out there. I don't remember what we said, but it's usually like a tall vesky or something, so.
Yeah, and so, so to be clear, that's actually explicitly written, the easement, that it'll be reseated. And also, to be clear, this is at no additional cost to the individual property owners. This is funded through the stormwater utility fee, which everybody gets on their, on their utility bill, and comes out of the stormwater utility fund. So we're not asking the property owners to fund this maintenance or to reseed this area. It all comes out of that fund, and it's explicitly written in the easement.
Jordan, the five property owners that were waiting to come in, are they spaced out, or are they in a certain location? Are they closed, or?
We are on the same block, which is problematic. Two, one is on the south end, one's on the north end.
I might just add, I mean, the stormwater utility fee that you mentioned really came as a result of the flood that we had, what year?
Twenty thirteen.
Twenty thirteen, so nearly ten years ago, and I happened to be on council at that time. We received a huge number of, of complaints, concerns from citizens of the community about why isn't the city doing something about this, or why are we in this position? Why were so many homes on the north end of, well, not just the north end of town, throughout town have all these flooding concerns? So a lot of studies were done, a lot of information was provided, a lot of time has been spent on this over the years, and even prior to this, we were already trying to resolve some of this. And so, you know, we listened at that time and understood that this was a major event and a major concern for citizens within this community. And, and I don't take eminent domain lightly. I, I, I don't. But this is, in my opinion, something that's been dragging on too long. We've been waiting on it forever, and it is for the betterment of the community that this work get done, and we need to see it get done. And that's, and, and really, this is, tell me if I'm wrong, but this is dredging from the south end to the north end, uh, through town, to get that water to flow more free. And this was just one part of the solution. There were multiple parts of the flooding situation.
Essentially just re-establishing the original channel?
Yeah.
And then, and then putting a mechanism so that we, you can continue to keep it.
So I don't know where this gets us, but yeah, we, we've, we've got to try to get to the point where we can get this started. Don't anticipate a flood? We didn't anticipate that one. You know, it was called the Hundred Year Flood at the time, I remember what it was talked about, or, or maybe even more, but it certainly was not a good situation for a lot of people.
Is there, is there a, do we have some sort of ordinance now that requires landowners to keep water flowing? Or is that not? I, I seems like I read that in a report, there may have been, I know there's been a couple, couple reports, but isn't there a requirement for citizens to do that?
FEMA? FEMA.
Yeah, yes, yeah. So in our, I believe in our floodplain ordinance, it does lay out that property owners are required to keep the creek free of debris and sedimentation, and that if, this, this is what I think from reading the ordinance recently. I haven't go back and get the exact language, but if they don't, then the city can, can pay some work, some sort of action or assess a fine.
That sounds like good reading.
More situation, I, yeah, that's.
Just clarify, doesn't FEMA have ultimate control over that channel? Or govern, don't they govern that channel with that over government? Central, FEMA, am I understanding that wrong?
Well, so FEMA, FEMA sets, FEMA sets the firm map, so the flood insurance rate map, and there's some regulatory components around that about how you can and can't develop and modify the floodplain or the floodway, which requires, you know, like, for example, if you want to, if you want to build a floodplain and you want to prove that you're not going to create some kind of disturbance upstream or downstream, then you might apply for something called a LOMER, which is a letter of macrovision based on the fill, to get that property out of the designated firm, flood, floodplain or floodway, to be able to do that kind of development. But then there's also other layers here too. So the state, so the Kansas Department of Agri poultry Division of Water Resources also issues floodplain development permits, which you have to get before developing the floodplain, and then the city also issues its own permits too. So there are three layers of government here, but in terms of FEMA, and you can augment this or correct me if I'm wrong, I think their primary concern is related to that. I think their primary, uh, concern is related to that map because that determines, uh, insurance. The flood, or floodplain insurance.
So the, the maintenance is still something that has to be done, but it's, it's as, as a channel, I guess, would silken or as it, you know, when they remap, they'll take what it is today and they'll map the new floodplain based off of it. So that's where like Garfield being done, everything we did out there, you know, the diversion channel eventually, when we get that done, we'll change the flood maps. But it doesn't occur until that's done. So when, whenever they come through and redo the maps, the floodplain maps, they'll, they'll resurvey it and Light Art has, has made it more accurate for them to understand. But they'll resurvey it and then redraw the new floodplains based off of the new criteria or the new situation, the new survey.
So our goal is to have this done before they resurvey and before they create the maps, new maps?
Well, the, the interior, I don't know how much the interior, have they mapped that one already? I don't know if this one would change, I don't know how that would affect these maps.
Um, this would not impact those maps much, it's the diversion channel that has more impact on, on the firm.
Yeah, 'cause this one, I think, you know, that's, the detail of the FEMA studies aren't as detailed. They don't get that detailed necessarily when it comes to Cal Creek. They're more, uh, higher, higher or lower detail. I mean, when they do the cross-sections for FEMA study, they're usually, uh, thousands of feet apart.
Okay, um, council, we, we have quite a ways to go and I think this has been a good discussion to have, understand the problem. Uh, and I know that we're continuing to work on it, so expect to hear some more in the very near future, hopefully on this as this goes forward. Um, we do have a recommendation. Uh, do we have questions, uh, specifically to the motion to approve the supplemental request? One more.
Uh, if we don't get this resolved in the next week or two, should we expect another one of these increases or? I'm assuming that's kind of a loaded question, but I guess, how, how much, if this keeps getting drug out, how much more should we, or, uh, that's not a fair question, but I assume we can expect another increase down the road if we don't get this resolved sometime soon. Is that a fair question?
There is a good, actually is a good, your, your letter has got a pretty good answer, I think, to that and I don't wanna put words in your mouth, although I'm not sure. But, uh, our team will continue to provide requested support, believe that most of the additional items of concern have likely been addressed. And it does say, however, if additional unforeseen items are identified, we will accordingly with the city discuss further supplementing the fee for that service. The way I took that is that you're trying to anticipate that this is, you know, let's get this wrapped up and this should trigger. Who knows what happens?
So I would, I would characterize it maybe this way, is if the unforeseen circumstances are that we're five years from now doing the same thing again, then that would be more like a supplement. Um, so we did the study, original study in two thousand and five. And then when we got the, uh, utility in place, then that was able to trigger funding for the project. And so that's where the city chose at the time to actually go down the path to make it happen and formalize it. So the nice thing is, is, is ninety-one percent there and it's just time to get the rest. So I don't anticipate a need unless it goes dormant again and then we take it back up later.
So yeah, just to, just to kinda augment that response, so, you know, part, part, and I'd say almost entirely the reason for this, this supplement, uh, this design request supplement, uh, is because of the intentional process that I have taken, the department has taken, and the city's orientation to being inclusive and to conducting a really thorough outreach and being open to accommodations and answering questions. And so what that's meant is that I have gone back and forth with Wilson tons and tons and tons of times to accommodate different property owners on different issues, answer specific questions, set up the question and answer forum, which they attended and were so great at, uh, and everything and anything in between. And so, uh, you know, the alternative would be that we didn't do any outreach and that we just, you know, slapped and easemented down. I think in some ways this is the cost of good governance and outreach. Um, and I, I'm really proud of that effort. Uh, but I think as Tyler was saying is that, oh, I mean, we're ninety-one percent there, but pretty much all the issues that require questions and modification have been resolved in this.
Further questions on the supplemental request? Seeing, uh, but thank you both.
Thank you.
Uh, council, uh, recommendation is to approve the supplemental request for Wilson and Company amount of net eight thousand five hundred, is there a motion?
Certainly.
Second?
Certainly.
So the motion, the second questions on the motion. Seeing, uh, no questions, how about our city clerk, do we have a call up?
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Ebel?
Yes.
Presley?
Yes.
Corwin?
Yes.
Gallant?
Yes.
Vanderweig?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes. Uh, motion passes, thank you council and, and thank you, Jordan, thank you, uh, Councilmember Peterson for your, your work and I know that they will continue, uh, working to resolve this. Uh, I will call your attention to item E and, uh, task order LS twenty-two dash zero zero one. I'm calling Chris Lendall, our director of public works.
The mayor, council, this is probably gonna be a little bit boring after that, I guess, but sometimes...
Thank you.
Boring for me is not a bad thing, I guess. Tyler's kinda highlighted some of the efforts that Wilson and Company has put in, uh, to the city for, uh, many, many years. And they were here, I think, before we came along even, from some of the plans that I've seen in the past, so. They have a, a tremendous history with the city of Linsport, with projects that we've worked on um, and with, uh, different items that have come up over time. Uh, they are not the only engineering firm that's worked with, with Linsport, many others have as well. But over time, when projects come up, questions come up, um, you tend to turn to people that know uh, a history behind your community, behind the projects that have taken place and they just, they know so much more about what's going on and it's easier for them to quickly tackle things and, and provide the answers that you're looking for. So that's kinda how this has developed. We've talked about this for several years, trying to put something together. Um, and I think industry standards have kind of evolved to what we're looking at here um, in much the same way that we did with Midstates Energy, um, KME Midstates and the master service agreement. Engineering firms are looking at the same type of proposal. Um, you put a blanket service agreement out, um, and then you work off of task orders. When certain, uh, issues arise, certain smaller projects arise or certain bigger projects, uh, if they get that detail. It kinda expedites some of those, uh, contract negotiations, uh, and, and things that have to take place. They're a professional firm, they're busy, they're, they're dealing with all kinds of things. So for them to pick up the phone when we call and divert their attention to us immediately and answer everything that we need is, is a challenge. So their services are valuable too. So this helps to, um, to expedite that, that process and, and ensure that they're, uh, being treated fair and equitably as well. I've, I've worked with Tyler on quite a few things. Um, I know my predecessor worked with him on a lot of things and, and they've always been very, very helpful. Uh, Jeff Holstie has been a tremendous asset as we developed the Stormwater Utility, worked for those projects. Um, the Garfield project, the diversion channel, the Cal Creek project, um, they've been, uh, a tremendous resource. Uh, Michael Kramer has come aboard and is working with me on some of the other projects that we're looking at. So I know that relationship is, um, it's a long relationship, uh, over many, many years and it's been very valuable. So what we're looking to do, um, is, is, um, have a motion to approve the engineering service agreement with Wilson and Company for engineering services uh, for the city of Linsport as described in the agreement. And we have some task orders after that, um, to follow.
Questions for Chris?
When would we trigger a situation where we would get bids from other engineering consulting firms? Like if it's a hundred thousand dollars worth of engineering, would that be something where we'd also try to bid someone else? Or is it a all encompassing thing where we're pretty much just gonna go exclusively this route? Cause I didn't see anything in there saying that we have to exclusively use them by agreeing with this.
I think that can be looked at in different ways depending on the type of project that we would be looking at, uh, the history behind some of the things that we've done with them. I, I don't know that there would be a standard necessarily on how we would look at that. The, it, it would just be something that would be evaluated as projects are moved through and different things would be looked at, I think, as far as what we would do with that.
Right, cause it, it makes sense, like if you're dealing with, uh, floodplain stuff that they already have, well, they info, they've already been involved in it, you know, I mean, that's, yeah, but I mean, if we were gonna do like new construction on something, then I guess that would probably be...
Completely different project that they've had nothing to do with, um, yeah, I mean, that would be looked at differently at that point. Part of this is involve, involves a lot of the ongoing projects that we've had communications with him already, so.
And the, the task orders that you see later in the agenda all tie back to projects.
I know, that's why it's kinda like, what triggers the bid process then, so, no, this makes sense for...
So the service agreement would just allow us to work within the agreement, do task orders for the different projects that are already in progress and have that institutional history and knowledge embedded in them?
Further questions?
Councilmember Peterson, yeah, new requests or proposals for some other bigger new project that would make sense?
Yeah, I guess that would be my question. I don't know what our current ordinances are for procurement of these types of contracts, but I'm a little uneasy, um, being a fiduciary for a town and protecting the public trust of making sure we're doing the right thing the best way possible for our taxpayers and not having this be a competitive, or at least putting it out a request for proposal, just essentially... And by the way, I appreciate everything they've done for us, don't get me wrong on this, uh, but, but I, I just, is it normal for a city to just do this unilaterally without any type of request for proposal type, uh, process?
Chris, may I speak for some? You go, right? Um, what this is really geared towards is, is to assist you with your engineering services. So I've, I've served as the, uh, acting city engineer for Kingman for several years. We've done that for fifty years plus, I, I couldn't find the start point of that. Uh, city of Garden City, we've been doing it for the last six years. I served that role for three years. But what it is, is it's an engineering services that, that essentially is a segment of your staff to assist with different things. It's not to replace going out for proposals, for requests for qualifications for engineers, for other things. This is just a tool in your tool chest to assist you with the quick hitters, the, the, the different things like the K-four grade separation, the, you know, different things where you guys needed guidance, you needed it quick. We've had institutional knowledge. So it's really to assist you as your acting city engineer, not to do everything.
Hi, it's Adam.
Sorry.
Uh, Michael Kramer with Wilson and Company. And one other thing I really wanted to add and point out is that specifically we don't exclude you going out for requests for proposals. And the reason for that is, is because of a lot of your funding agencies, CDVG, et cetera, may require you to go out for proposals and, and we certainly, you know, are, are open to that and understand that. You know, we, you know, Tyler has a long relationship here, Wilson does. We want to continue that and to be able to, you know, provide good services when you call.
But I guess just back to my original question, do we have an ordinance regarding procurement of professional services? Or are we, are we required to put this up for qualifications or proposals?
For, for a new project, yes, we would do a request for proposals. Uh, for, for this, this is like, like you said, this is essentially serving as kind of a member of our staff. So we don't have an engineer on staff, um, and so by putting a service agreement into place, we can call on their knowledge as engineers, but it's, like you said, we're not, we're not necessarily saying this is an exclusive contract. Yes, we, we do have a policy that says that we need to get bids and we, for a new project, we would do that.
But securing professional services, though, this is what we would be doing, let's say it's our CPA for our audit or any, any type of professional service, do we have a, an ordinance that requires us to, to do that? My question.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Like, are you saying we should get a series of three bids from different firms to offer this service? Or are you saying?
I'm at, uh, I'm asking if we have an ordinance that requires us to do that when we...
Well, I mean, but she answered the question that it's required for new projects, right? So what, I guess I'm not clear what's the...
But I've been here and answered whether it's for securing professional services.
Well, I think this is a little different than that. When you're talking about like our, say accountant or something, that's like a, you know, higher position, you know, whereas this is almost like doing change orders, you know, to contractual services. It'd be like, you know, you're automatically agreeing that there's cha, you have to do this and this, that they're gonna take care of it. That's kind of what I see this as, is you're agreeing that, hey, if they need ten thousand dollars worth of, you know, oh, we agree to that in this task order, this first one for ten thousand dollars of additional engineering consulting services, however needs to be used. You know, it's kinda like prepaying for it.
I kinda think that it's like an attorney and retainer.
Yeah.
I mean, that's why I feel like booking out of this. To consult with you on whatever, because we don't have a city engineer, so.
Right. But, but you're not hiring an engineer.
I don't disagree with any of that, but my question was, is there an, an ordinance whether, that, that makes us or requires us to do that, that's all I was asking.
I would assume that Roxy is looking at it with a...
I, I'm, yes, I am. I'm not getting names for right away.
Also, we did have the city attorney review this and, um, and he had no objections to it, so, um, I apologize that I don't have every ordinance memorized quite yet, um. But any expenditure of funds, we would be bringing back to council. So this is not necessarily, this is just for the, the engineering consultant.
Further questions? I am, yeah, I'm, I'm assuming that we will not have the, the answer to, uh, the question this evening. If there is an ordinance that has certain requirements. Councilmember, do you have a question?
Oh, I just, I, all right, I guess that would be my question, are we hoping to take action on this tonight or do we have time to digest all of this?
Have, wait and see if there is an ordinance or something.
Urgency to this, gotta wait two weeks for this, do you wanna address that?
The, the agreement, the, the task orders that follow, um, the first task order is, is not specifically time related. The second one is related to the, uh, K-four separation and some work that's going on with that uh, and preparations for some other projects as well. The K-four separation is, is the time critical one. The K4 separation is the time critical one.
So what, explain to me, and I don't understand, have we adopted an agreement, an engineering services agreement in the past like this?
We have one with KMEA Midstates for the electric work for the substation transformer project. We did a service agreement with them on that.
So the second task order, I mean, that's critical enough that we will not have two weeks of time. Because I start right at a cat flashback of the whole fleet service thing. It was like, oh, that has to be right now, you know, this big, huge life longer agreement, you know. I mean, I don't think this mirrors, mirrors that, because on that, we were actually basically going to guarantee expenditures of funds in the future. This we're not, because you asked for lots of them, right, but still. I kinda hate getting stuff right at the last moment.
I, it appears David and Roxy have, I'll read the ordinance to you, the pertinent portion. The council may by ordinance retain a licensed professional engineer to act in the capacity of city engineer for specifically defined duties and provide for reasonable compensation for services rendered. So it would appear that there would be no requirement to place it up to bid or to receive more than one bid.
Very good work, David and Roxy, strong on her guys, that was all David.
Okay. And again, you mentioned that the city attorney reviewed this and seen...
So that being the case, you know, and we have the question before us and there may still be some discomfort in moving just because it's, you know, it is kind of a large item. But that being the case, are there any questions for Chris regarding the services agreement? Okay, thank you, Chris. Council, is there, there is a recommendation, is there a desire for a motion to approve the engineering services agreement with Wilson and Company for engineering services for the city of Linsburg as described in the agreement?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there discussion on the motion? I don't want any comments to be misperceived, was not thinking this was a good idea. This could be a very good idea. And I think Wilson has proven to be a really good partner of ours, I admit that. But when we, I guess this is more of a process or procedures for council to receive this much information a few days before we vote on it, then we hear testimony and then have to vote on it, but then minutes after, I struggle with. And I guess things of this magnitude, if we could just, in the future, have at least till the next meeting to digest and study this, after hearing the testimony, I would just make these votes a lot easier, I guess. I don't, I don't know how else to lay that out there, if that makes sense.
Very clear. That's very clear.
Just to counter that, I guess I just appreciate that the staff has researched and done their information on it and before they even brought it to us to even look at or see. And we did have several days to read it, so I appreciate your stance, but I don't have that issue.
I appreciate that, and I think that the administrator and myself are always cognizant on the fact that you need, this needs to be, you need to have this information in time and have the ability to... So, and we want to continue to move in that direction. So I appreciate what you're saying, I appreciate your trust in the staff as well. So, I don't know if that makes us any better, but did you have anything... Okay, okay, she was, she was ma, she looked like she did it. Okay.
Well, I do, I will admit that I do. I apologize that we didn't have it as a first reading. I was, I guess somewhat confused, because I thought that the first readings, it was a preference of council, I felt like it was like a major policy change. And I didn't see this so much as a policy change, so I confused that in preference for how the legislature sees the information.
I didn't find this to be too much.
No, I think it was finally dead.
Okay, well, we have a motion before you. I would guess we need a roll call on this, so have our clerk, your roll call vote, please.
Councilmembers Corwin.
Yes.
Presley.
Yes.
Hebel.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Peterson.
I'm just abstaining.
Vanderweig.
Yes.
Gallant.
No.
The motion passes, thank you, council, and thank you, Roxy. And don't, don't get concerned that you have different opinions. If everybody had the same opinion, we only need one of you. So we will...
How much I would save our taxpayer.
Harry Truman said that. If you want efficiency, you're the dictator, so. Okay, we will now go to the task order LS 22-001, and call Chris Liddholm again. Okay, so maybe that wasn't as easy as...
Counselor, why is it better? Task order LS 22/001 is basically what Tyler highlighted, as an on-call engineer. Linsburg's growing, Linsburg's expanding, there's a lot of things going on. And I will be the first to admit that I don't have the engineering background, I don't have the experience background for a lot of the things that come across my desk and answer and questions that need to be answered. I do my best, but there are times when engineers are required. And that's what this task order is about. This provides that on-call service to have somebody assigned to us from Wilson and Company to address those questions when they come in. And that can be for anything, that could be stormwater related, that could be water, wastewater, streets. We've dealt with them all on all those utilities and all those different areas of expertise, so. Basically, what this would do would provide on-call service for the remainder of this year and through 2023. And, you know, those wouldn't, those services wouldn't be charged out unless they were utilized, unless we made a call or they did some work. It just kind of establishes the baseline for what we need. So we're just looking for a motion to approve task order LS 22-001 from Wilson and Company for on-call professional services for not to exceed price of $10,600.
Questions for Chris? I thought that's what we just did, what we just did.
The master service agreement.
So the master service agreement's different than the on-call?
The master service agreement is the base of the contract of how the services will be rendered.
Do you wanna address that?
Yeah, it's, it's the, it's kinda like the bylaws. It's basically the contract that establishes the, all the liabilities, the terms, the conditions, the standard of care, all that is what we just talked about. And so what that does is it gets all the legal stuff out of the way to where now, if you guys need something, and what we, what this is, is it's just general, it sets a budget that Chris, the city staff, can use for items of emergency need, like for example, Bethany College doing some drainage work, and they wanna attach to your storm sewer system. And Chris goes, I don't know if that's a great idea. And so it's the ability for us to run up here and say, well, here's our recommendation. So that's kinda what this one's for. So what these now, what the task orders are, is it's a scope and a fee. And so we don't have to go through the 20-page contract again. Is that...
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, but I think the motion that was made was included $10,600.
That's what...
And, am I wrong?
That's correct.
So the motion that we previously voted on included $10,000.
No, the previous motion did not include any financials.
If you go to page 32, there's no...
Okay, I just, I thought I heard that. I get it, that's essentially a master agreement, or what I think of as a master agreement. Puts it in place, and now we're voting on LS 22.
Yes, and there are three specific items, and I apologize for not making that clear. So, yeah, we are on item, or the second item.
Thank you.
I have a question. So tell me, tell me about how you came up with this number of hours. My only concern is, I mean, I'm a little, it seems a little like it might be blown through pretty quickly, but I am in favor of this concept and I'm willing to, you know, take it for a ride regardless, but I just wanna hear a little bit more about how you came up with that number.
So, quite honestly, in looking at it, we estimate the hours based on that $10,000 mark. And so that's where we came up with that 58 or so hours that are shown on the task agreement. You're right, that's, I mean, that's not a lot of hours. And so in the agreement also, for that task order, we do have where if we expect it to, if Chris calls us up and says, hey, can you look at this or do this? And if we think it's gonna be more than eight hours, we'll say, you know, here's how many hours we think it's going to take and how much of your budget it's going to cost.
Okay, and then I, obviously, we'd have the option to extend it at any point during the year, but...
Right, and, you know, hopefully, we'll be diligent about using those hours and then we'll have those discussions as we go, for sure.
Thank you.
I think a good example is the next task order is a good example of an item of need that exceeds the...
So you know, let's quote this one as a separate task order, then?
Yeah, so that's kinda the, the second task order is an example of that situation.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, further questions for Chris? Seeing no further questions, thank you, Chris. We have a recommendation, it's a motion to approve task order LS 22-001 from Wilson and Company for on-call professional services for not to exceed price of $10,600. Is there a motion?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, is there discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, we'll have our city clerk call a roll call vote, please.
Councilmembers Hebel.
Yes.
Presley.
Yes.
Corwin.
Yes.
Gallant.
No.
Vanderweig.
Yes.
Peterson.
I'm abstaining, just because I'm not 100%.
Smith.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I didn't vote.
Oh, sorry. Yes. I don't know what your deal is today, Roxy. Sorry, Peterson. I'll start taking first.
You can just take day off.
Right.
Thank you, council, motion passes. We'll now move to the third item under engineering, and this is task force LS 22-002. And again, call on Chris Liddholm, our director of public works.
Task order LS 22-002 is basically three, has three components to it. The first component is probably the most key of this, because it has to deal with the grade four separation project and some of the information that KDOT is looking at with that project. And I'm gonna let Michael address that a little bit more, because he knows exactly where they're at with it. Two of the other components, Harrison and Cole project. Tyler and I have discussed options for Harrison and Cole, the deteriorating concrete. We've patched, we replaced, it had a major project 10 years ago, something like that, to replace some of the bad spots, and now there's no bad spots. So it's, it's a, there's no real way to repair it and continue that. That process is, it's never gonna get to the point where it's good. So we've looked at just possibly replacing the whole set, or the whole thing. So some of this will be to look at cost estimates of that and what that would take to do that type of a project. And there are, that could be funded through a CLIPS project, which is the City Connecting Link Improvement Program, which is what was utilized on McPherson Street between Main and Cole Street. And it's also what we use to do a repave of K4 going outside or out west of town. So that's what that part of that is. The third part is part of the process that we've talked about in budget meetings. That's to do a cost share program, or apply for a cost share program to try and do an entire maintenance program of the chipped sealed and asphalted streets in town to try and get them to one baseline and do some significant maintenance and try and have them to a point where we can kinda maintain them from there on out in a better fashion. We're, we're just chipping at it bits and pieces at a time. We need to get to where we know we're at one even plan field. So that's what that part is about, to come up with some cost estimates and apply for a cost share program. So, Michael, do you wanna address the separation project that they're looking at?
For the K4 grade separation, Tyler gave an update to council, I believe, in August, when we talked about removing the grade separation. Since that time, the city's met with KDOT, and then we've had other discussions after that with KDOT. They are very interested in funding at least a portion of that project. And so they would like updated cost estimates formally. And really, it allows us to do some work as far as discussing with them what city state agreement would look like and what, what portion of that project they'd be willing to move forward with. They are currently looking at how can they get it funded? And so they're actively trying to figure out how to fund the project. So we're really hopeful for the community that that, that that moves forward. And it sounds very promising from our end, so.
And I'll just, if I may, add on to that. When we met with KDOT, they, we met with a senior program manager with KDOT who was sent on behalf of Secretary Lorenz, and they were most impressed. I just wanted to share this with council, because I think this is a testament to the city, that for a small town, a lot of small towns who come to KDOT asking for help with a project or to fund a project, have only just begun to think about what that might look like. We had the engineering done, we had the maps done, we had the cost estimates done, we had the entire project ready to hand to them. And so all they said was, can you update these cost estimates for us? And it was most impressive to them that we had the foresight and everything in place when we met with him. And so that speaks very highly of those who came before me. And, you know, I know that Greg worked very hard on this, and Lucas has spent a lot of time on this, and Chris, and Jordan, and David, and everybody has had a hand in this. So I just wanted on the record to acknowledge all of them and to bring it to this point, because it was, it was quite surprising to KDOT to see the amount of work that has already gone into this.
Okay, thank you. Um, questions for Chris?
I, I just want clarification, just, just for the benefit of anyone listening, could you state in layman's terms what's meant by grade separation? Because that may not be clear to everyone what that actually is. I'll let the engineer. I mean, I can tell you what I think it is, but, you know.
So, and I, and I have a display, if, if you'd like, Roxy, you can pull it up, I can give that to her, but, um, essentially the K four highway coming into town, there's the bridge, um, used to be over a railroad, now it's over the trail. And, and that bridge requires maintenance and, and there's upcoming maintenance that would be required. If we remove the bridge and then put K four on the old alignment where it used to be, uh, that then opens up that land for development. And so it's essentially removing what was put there before to go over the road.
To be fair, I didn't know that. I just wanted to say, remove a bridge.
I was hoping that you'd say, well, I didn't know that and you did.
No, well, you did, you did do a fantastic job, but, but, yes.
Okay, further questions? Chris? Would you like a motion? Um, we have your motion here, so.
Your recommendation.
Thank you, Chris. Um, so council, uh, this is recommendation, motion to approve task order LS twenty-two dash zero zero two for engineering services, uh, from Wilson Company not to exceed price of eight thousand dollars. Is there a mo, motion to that effect?
So moved.
A second. And a second. Uh, questions on the motion? Seeing no further discussion, the city clerk will do a roll call both, please.
Council member Bruce.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Vanderweig.
Yes.
Gallant.
No.
Corwin.
Yes.
Presley.
Yes.
Hebel.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion passes. Thank you, Roxy. And we will now turn our attention to item F, and we're hoping Noah is still here.
In the way.
Noah is, Noah is clearly wishing that the snow cap from mower.
Yeah, so I, or, good evening, everybody. Um, yeah, a little bit lighter subject. Um, my topic is the purpose of a mower cab for a grasshopper, mower, tractor mower. Um, the parks department uses the tractor, um, grasshopper tractor mower to move snow on different parts of city property. Um, in the past, we have gone without a cab and it has left our employees exposed on the entire time that we need to move snow. And depending on the snowstorm, it can, it can be a while. Um, so I think that it's in the best interest of the city and our apartment to have a cab available to our employee. The cab can be reusable every year. Um, we want to continue to use the grasshopper mower. Um, we are happy with the mower itself as far as quality, dependability, and also the great customer service we get from grasshopper. The attached quote of thirty, of three thousand six hundred and twenty-one dollars, um, has all the necessary accessories and the metal cap. The recommendation of the parks department is a motion to approve the G and G sales end quote for the metal cap and accessories for that amount.
Thank you, Noah. Are there questions for Noah? Council member.
I was just going to joke about lighter subject than what if it's a wet snow, but I'm not going to do that.
Further questions, comments? Thank you, Noah.
All right.
Okay, council, uh, the recommendation is a motion to approve the G and G sales incorporated quote for one metal, metal cap and necessary accessories in the amount of three thousand six hundred and twenty-one dollars. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there questions on the motion? Seeing no questions on the motion, have our city clerk call a roll call both, please.
Council member Gallant.
Yes.
Vanderweig.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes.
Hebel.
Yes.
Presley.
Yes.
Corwin.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, council, and thank you, Roxy. And we will turn our attention to item G, the Raymer Society of the Arts Event Request, Resolution Number twelve dash two zero two-two. Now call on our city clerk, Roxy Sugar.
Once again, as a nonprofit, the Raymer Society can sponsor an event that promotes the arts and serve their complimentary alcoholic liquor or cereal malt beverages to the general public, as long as it is approved by the governing body. And what they are looking at doing is on December twenty-fourth, they would like to hold a glug and, correct me if I say this wrong, but a dopa gri, dopa greta?
Sure.
Is that okay?
Just say dop. It's easier.
There you go. Um, to the public on December twenty-fourth. So we are looking for a motion to approve the Raymer Society's notification, um, event promoting the arts, Resolution Number twelve dash twenty twenty-two, authorizing the serving of complimentary alcoholic liquor or cereal malt beverage at their December twenty-fourth twenty twenty-two event.
Thank you, Roxy. Are there questions for Roxy? Seeing no questions. Um, council, is the recommendation, recommendations, a motion to approve, uh, the Raymer Society for the Arts Notification, a nonprofit organization event promoting the arts, and Resolution Number twelve dash two zero two-two, authorizing the serving of complimentary alcoholic liquor or cereal malt beverage at the December twenty-fourth two thousand twenty-two event as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, um, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No, we are adjourned. Thank you, council.
Who was the second?
Corey.
Oh, so I did not hear that.